It's a zoning board of appeals meeting for Monday, October 15th, 2018. Will you call roll, please?
Yes, Craig Masters.
President.
Kathy Stevenson, president. Rick Pitzel.
Present.
Tessie Buckler, present. Steve Katy. Oh, Mike Wu, sorry, did I see that? Mike Wu. Steve Katy.
Present.
Beth Kazan. Sarah DeGore.
So I know Sarah's coming, but she's going to be about five minutes late, so. First order of business is to approve the minutes from the zoning board of appeals meeting from September 17th, 2018. There's a, if you don't have them before this, there's one in your packet. So the minutes are in your packet, so if the motion to approve those minutes?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion seconded. All those in favor, or do we call roll? I can't remember. Yeah, we'll call roll.
Craig Masters?
Aye.
Kathy Stevenson?
Aye.
Rick Pitzel?
Aye.
Tessie Buckler?
Aye.
Mike Wu?
Aye.
Steve Katy?
Aye.
Sarah DeGore? Beth Kazan?
Okay. Okay, the first order of business on variances in special use is the application for the approval of a special use permit for 3707 Vincent Avenue. Is Mr. Gates here?
President.
If you'd like to step up, please. You can step up to the podium there. So according to your application, you're looking to use the property at 3707 Vincent Avenue that's zone B2 general retail for auto sales, which is what it currently is, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, do you want to just kind of explain to us? Is it not you running it now? What's your hope?
His legal counsel is here too, and I believe is prepared to address the application as well.
Okay, so somebody just needs to explain to us what you want to try to do with the property and?
Yeah, the only thing that I'm looking to do is sell vehicles there. Just stage and sell. That's all. With my dealer's license, I'm allowed to do the remittance of the license plates and tax and sale, tax and title, and that's it. So I mean, there's no mechanical work or, you know, nothing dealing with fixing vehicles there, just selling, just staging and selling them.
And the hours, is it?
General, general business hours.
General business hours, okay. And then, the only other question I had was, is there any lighting? I didn't see any lighting as I drove by there, but you're not going to add any lighting or anything like that?
Well, I'm not adding any lighting, but I am responsible for making sure that the current lighting is in working order.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
So there won't be any change from the way it was administered before in terms of the hours operation or delivery of vehicles, you know, cars or anything like that?
No, ma'am.
Do you have another lot?
No, this is my first one.
Oh, these cars that are down there now, are they auction car?
Yes, sir.
And you're not doing any repairs though?
No.
In the little garage or anything like that?
No, sir. There's actually no water or electricity or anything there right now.
Even in the garage?
No, there isn't.
You expect there to be eventually though, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're not going to do any repairs?
No, sir.
And your paid business hours, you mentioned the general business hours, but for car dealers, that can be very flexible.
Well, with my licensing to get, my application to get my license, it states that you can't do business beyond 5:00 or on Sundays.
Okay, got that.
And as far as the garage, there's no office space there, so what my plan was to turn that entire garage into an office so that I have somewhere to sit and talk to people coming to buy cars.
Okay, and your only entrance off of the side street, you don't have one into the alley, you don't have one into War Memorial, that's pretty small of an entrance.
Yeah, I know.
What about, let's say people that are sort of, let's say you fill a lot up, where's the people that are going to go and look at your cars and go park?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Well, if you fill your lot up with cars, okay, and look at your cars, you got four or five down there now, so you could have, like, four times that, easy, you know, 20, 25 cars. Where's the people that are going to come and look at your inventory and go and park at?
Well, from what I seen from the previous special use application, I think that the lot was only allowed 25 cars. So if the lot is allowed 25 cars, that would pretty much cover up the entire front row and behind the entire front row. So I mean, it still leaves a lot of space. If, I'm assuming that maybe you could get about 40 cars on the lot. So with 25 being a max, that still leave for 15 cars.
Okay, now, if you're in there and you fill two rows of cars on the front, and somebody pulls in off of that little side street, there, and he's getting back out, it's kind of like, are they going to be parking where you have, where the old van is in now, along that area? For customers or?
No, yeah, that could be parking for customers. I haven't really made an exact model for it. I just based everything off of the previous application, which it, in a way that it was ran, and it looked, it looked like a pretty good model to me.
Okay. I'll tell you, talking to the neighbors around you, that's why I'm referring to business hours, because some of the hours that, as far as they're brought in and out, weren't very favorable to them, and the concern over mechanics work being done there is not real favorable to them. And like I said, lighting, that's really non-existent there, so I think there's one street light, if I recall, looking at. And in general, I'm going to tell you this right in front, most of your neighbors aren't for it, talking to them, you know. So that's something we got to consider as neighbors too, you know. They don't go here, go in, they don't want a car lot, just put it that way. They've experienced it before, so that's all I got.
Were there issues that the neighbors expressed? Are there neighbors here?
Well, we'll find out if there's neighbors here, but.
Were there issues that they expressed from the previous ones that we could have?
They expressed the times that some of the, that's why I asked you about this auction stuff, some of the flatbed records where we call, deliver cars and drop them off, the noise that they make as far as the mechanical and the voice noise at night, the darkness, because you don't know what the heck's going on there with somebody pulling in and dropping off. And there's also very concern that if you start doing mechanical work, that leads to a whole different class of vehicles. And it was very problematic, I never found any point in it before. So, and I don't pay much here or not, you know, I won't use your name.
Yeah, we'll ask here in a minute.
Are your mic or both on?
Yes. So do you have any other comments? Anything else you want? Any other questions from the board?
No, no, just to speak on the neighbors. I don't, I wouldn't understand if maybe they had an issue with the way the cars were delivered, but as far as business hours, there's, I'm never up there beyond 5:00. I've never spent more than an hour there at a time, and that was only to meet the transporters of the vehicles. I've never done any mechanic work up there ever. That garage is, it actually still has furniture in it from the people who were there before, so I don't, I wouldn't, I don't know why or where they get that idea from, but I've never done any repair work there. I actually have a garage, a shop that all my vehicles are taken to for all repair work.
What are the hours that the cars are delivered on? If it's, you have to be?
It's before 5:00.
Okay, so they're all delivered before 5:00? There's nothing that would be delivered after 5:00 or on Sunday or anything like that?
So you're basically talking 8 to 5, Saturday through Friday?
No, Monday through Friday.
Monday, I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday.
I think Saturday is even shorter than 5:00. I'm not sure the exact time, but it's, there's never after 5:00, and you're not allowed to be open on Sundays.
Okay.
What about, excuse me, what about signage?
Yeah, I have to have, I have to have a sign on the building that is lit, so I don't know if that would count as adding lighting, but that's a requirement to have my license.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there anybody here from that neighborhood that wanted to speak on this property?
I have nothing to say because I live at the other end, but you folks have got to pick up, we can't hear you. Bring those microphones closer to your mouth.
Sorry about that, I offered you the very first chair up here too. Yeah, didn't I? I'm sorry.
So there's no other, nobody else in the audience to speak on this? Any other?
I just have a quick question.
Yep.
Has that property been in use as a car lot?
Yes.
Previously?
That's what it, yes.
Do you happen to know who the owner was previously?
I have it here on this, it's. The legal owner of the property is Gary Kemp. I don't know if he ran the car dealership or not, but he did, so yeah. Okay, well, barring any other discussion or questions, we either need a motion to approve the special use with conditions, whatever conditions, or a motion to deny the special use.
I just have, one other question, just on the lighting. Is it, it's that there is not enough lighting, so Mr. Gates said that he was going to address the lighting that was there. Is it that the lighting is burnt out and the neighbors would feel bad? Because sometimes neighbors have issues that there's too much lighting reflecting into their area.
I think that the lighting there is burned out, but above hasn't been adjusted.
Okay, so once you correct the lighting, then it should be well lit? So we could have that as?
Actually, it's a street, it's a street light that shines directly onto the lot.
Well, the street light's not burnt out, is it?
Yeah, but it's the street light, it's not open.
So we made it to, okay. Craig, did the neighbors that you spoke to, did they realize that there was a public hearing tonight, that they could come and voice their, they would receive?
There's, actually, there's three, and they, one's quite elderly, the other has some kind of handicap, and the other one, I don't know, but they mentioned if they could, they would be here, but if not, if I would voice their opinions for them.
So if hours of operation and lighting seem to be two of the main concerns that they had, if we put those as conditions down for the approval?
Well, the actual, yeah, the timeliness, the traffic flow of the stuff, he said they have to be delivered by 5:00 at night because, you don't want somebody dropping off cars at midnight.
Right, exactly. But that's a, that's a special condition we can put in to, if we decide to approve it, we could put that in to hopefully alleviate some of the neighbors' concerns.
It's kind of odd, I'm looking right now, there's actually three parking, three streetlights. One by the driveway.
Yeah, right where the entrance is.
Coming in off of Vincent, right? There's one on the corner of War Memorial and Vincent, it goes out over War Memorial, and there's one on the corner of the alley back there that kind of goes west, so there's like three streetlights there.
Well, I think part of the problem you encounter, and I do myself, is that heaven forbid, as you get old, the streetlights don't light up enough for you, you know? And, you know, it's just a lack of life, you know, so.
Craig, is the light, if there's nothing happening at night, because I can see where you want it lit so that if something's going on over there, or there's, you know, you don't want people breaking into cars that you could see.
Right.
But you also don't want it bright enough that it's?
You don't want to?
It's an issue for?
Light pollution, right.
Well, just an issue for the neighbors that they're trying to?
The other businesses along that area all have lighting and they're moderate lighting, it's not glaring, even though they're down farther, because the closest one to this lot would be McDonald's, you know, it's only the next block up, and the florist and the other ones, at evening are subdued lighting, so it's, I can't tell you any more than that because I've never seen it lit at night. I was down there during the daytime, talking with them, so that was just one of the things that's brought up.
Well, and the only other, and I'm not sure, it's really kind of more to the village board on their corridor plan for War Memorial if this?
Speaking here?
But more up to the village, if a corridor plan, the corridor plan for War Memorial, if a car lot fits there or not, and, you know, I don't know that that's necessarily anything we know here tonight, if that's what their plans are for that corridor, et cetera, but I know they've done some corridor planning and that sort of thing, so, you know, maybe the village board has a different take on what they want in that corridor. So, question is, does somebody want to make a motion to either approve or deny the request? And?
I'll make the motion, and I'm not going on the corridor plan because that's speculation and future stuff. I'm going on the wishes of the neighborhood that that's not something desirable they want to see in their area, so I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Do we need to go through?
Yeah. Okay, everybody has their sheet, if you want to look at your sheet, I'm going to, that's what I'm going to walk through here. So we have a motion made by Craig Masters, and is there a second?
You got a second, man.
Second?
Yeah.
By Mike Wu. To deny the request for a special use site, special use made by Mr. Gates. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Okay, so from a finding standpoint, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use or site plan will not be detrimental or endanger to the public health, safety, morals, comforts, or general welfare, and I believe, Craig, that's the one you're saying yes on. Does everybody else agree with that?
I guess, well, I have a hard time agreeing without them being present and making their concerns known here, I mean.
So we have some yes, some no?
So I would, I would vote yes for that, because like I said, it's, I'm glad that you talked to the neighbors, but without a letter from them or them to base it entirely off of that, because I think that we'd be willing to put some special considerations into this to help, you know, make it more, because there is a used car lot that's being currently run there. Is it, there's not?
There should not be one active there because it doesn't have anything. That car lot that was there left a year ago, two years ago, no, so what's there is not?
Okay, but it's been a used?
It's been a used car lot. It hasn't been as active as a used car lot for the last year or so. The special use or site plan will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of the other property in the many vicinity for persons already permitted nor substantially diminished and impair property values within the neighborhood to which it is be located. So I assume we probably have some yeses and some nos on that, as far as agreeing with that, but. And then, the establishment of the special use or site plan will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. So I'd assume we have some yeses and nos on that also. Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage and/or necessary facilities have been or will be approved, will be provided, so I don't think we've had any issue with drainage or any of that that I've heard of, but maybe access. Adequate measures have not been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress designed to minimize traffic congestion in public streets. I don't know that you'd be able to enter or exit anywhere else. If a public use or providing public utility service, that such a service shall meet a demonstrable public need, that's not applicable. And then, the special use or site plan shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district which it is located. In each instance, be modified pursuant to the recommendations of the zoning board of appeals. Yes on that? So, we have a motion to deny the request made by Craig Masters, seconded by Mike Wu. Do you want to call roll?
Yes, Craig Masters?
Supporting the resolution, aye.
Aye. Kathy Stevenson? Nay. Rick Pitzel?
Aye.
Tessie Buckler?
Nay.
Mike Wu?
Aye.
Steve Katy?
Aye.
Okay, so we have three ayes and two nays.
Okay. Three ayes, two nays.
I'm sorry, four and two.
Oh, four and two.
Four ayes and two nays.
So, my understanding is this still, this, our decision then goes to the village board?
Correct, the recommendation to the village board is to deny.
So the recommendation is to deny, and then the village board can take that up at their meeting? I don't know if they're going to take it up tomorrow night or?
It is on the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay, we'll take this one. Thank you, Mr. Gates?
Yes.
Do you want that mark? I'll just give you that sheet now, is that?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
And Sarah DeGore just joined us, so she is now, we don't have to do anything special to add her to the category, no. All right, on to the next order of business. Going to make everybody out there that's here wait until the very end. So we have an ordinance of 201570, an ordinance amending the Title 10 of the Village Code of Peoria Heights for the purpose of adding a new Chapter 11, providing for overlay zoning districts, and amending the Title 11 of the Village Code in order to accommodate the subdivision of land in accordance with regulations applicable with any overlay zoning district. So, everybody should have a copy of that ordinance. So basically, we are talking about these overlay districts that we've been talking about for the last, about the overlay districts that we've been talking about for some time now, and the first one that is next on the agenda, but this actually is amending the zoning code of the village to allow for overlay districts. So this is just the simple, we can now create overlay districts for both business, different corridors, residential, et cetera, et cetera. This will allow us to create overlay districts in the village. So is there any discussion on that?
I think it's very, excuse me, necessary in order to get the diversity, but also to keep a, the method of contiguous, I guess is, I don't know exactly the right word to use for that, but I don't want to use conformance, you know, that's not right, but there has to be a plan, let's just put it that way, you know, and.
And for those of you in the audience that may not understand what we're talking about is, the next order of business is talking about an overlay district down the business district of Peoria Heights that would allow some different zoning, some changes to the zoning regulations.
Overlay district.
Pardon?
What considers the override?
It's the, it's Prospect Road from Glen to Lake Street.
Glen to Lake.
Yep. And it's for, really, the purpose is to, you know, if the downtown area had a catastrophe, none of the buildings could rebuild like they're rebuilt today. They'd all have 25-foot setbacks, right, so they, you couldn't come up to the street, you couldn't come up to the sidewalk. In fact, most of the buildings would only be about 15 feet deep because the alleys are behind them, and so then they, and so every one of those properties would have to have zoning ordinances and variances and et cetera to reconstruct what we have. And not only that, is as you go further down Prospect.
Further down means south.
Meaning south, when you go further down, south of CVS, you know, none of, we, and Kathy's, Kathy and Tessie are more the experts on this than I am, but you lose your street wall, everything starts going back, right? CVS is set way back, the gas station's set way back, the grocery store is set way back, so everything starts opening up.
Further than that, for instance, I own 4405 Prospect, I don't have much setback as it sits right now.
Yep.
With the sidewalk in consideration, what are we, what are they going to do in terms of changing that setback for, say, 4405, across the street would be the silver dollar, the subway, the old Ray Boy building?
So, yeah.
Go ahead.
It would apply to new development, and if there's more than a 10%, it would be triggered by, I believe it's that there's more than a 10% of the fair market value renovation or remodeling or reconstruction of some sort, so the idea would be?
Yep.
Well, if there's more than 10% in value, I would set back an additional 10 feet.
Well, yeah, but you're not, you don't have to.
We're actually, we want people to be up to the street.
We want people to be closer.
We're trying to encourage people, we're actually trying to maximize as much as we can the property along Main Street, and right now, the current zoning has a lot of restrictions on there that aren't necessarily applicable to individual businesses, so this would allow us to be more tailored to the businesses, but we want it to be, we want some conformity that you'd have, we'd have a downtown area that would kind of continue down. We realize part of it is the way it is, and so as new things would be added and would be built, that they would start to resemble what's north of, I guess you'd say?
4405.
Like 4500.
South of the railroad tracks.
Yes, yes. And so the idea would be is, we're trying to kind of extend that, kind of that pedestrian area, so you get foot traffic down there, and we're trying to make it so we would actually draw more business down to the area south of the railroad tracks.
Yep. And like she said, it's, she called it, in some of the meetings we've been in, the street wall, where you notice everything's pretty close to the street, and then you get down there and it kind of goes like this, and you kind of lose it, and so it doesn't draw you down into that neighborhood because it's more of a driving neighborhood than a walking neighborhood.
And you'll notice just, once you get past Kelly Avenue, you've got, like on the, I'll just go with on the west side of the street, so you've got an entire block. So you've got an entire block that's CVS. So in terms of people walking down that street, they look at that and it's a parking lot I have to cross, it's another access onto Prospect. So normally, you'd have your access off some of the side roads because you don't want them on your main road because it's, pedestrians don't want to cross that, that cars coming in and out. And then you've got another block that's Save-A-Lot. So there's, as people look south, if they're on the trail or people just walking, there's nothing to draw them down. The 4500 building is an example of where we used to have the gas station that sat back that was Glass America, and once that was built, it's kind of extended that wall. So people used to stop before that, and now that brings you into the next block. And so what we'd like to do is kind of continue as best we can with any new development to keep drawing you down the street and bring more foot traffic and more business, more revenues to the businesses that are located south of that area.
The guess ordinance doesn't change things the way they are as of right now.
No.
No.
Only new development. Only new development or the 10%. There are some...
But you mean 10%?
Will require a business owner on Prospect to sell its property.
Correct.
No, absolutely not.
Well, no, a new, so, so if, just like she said, the 10% renovation, so if you decided to, in your property, I'm just making up numbers, if your property was worth $100,000 and you made $10,000 worth of renovation, you would come, you would have to come and provide a site plan, right, for that renovation? And we would apply this overlay district to the renovation.
I see.
Okay? But if, if a new person bought one of those lots and wanted to tear down and build something else, then yeah, it would apply. If they just bought the lot?
Does that affect devalue our property?
It actually should not devalue it from the standpoint that, and I guess it depends on the property, I shouldn't say, that most properties are not, you're not maximizing the square footage that you have. And I, I use CVS, it's a national chain, it's easy to use.
Yes, CVS is affecting your rule. On the other hand, I own Heights Auto Sales, so we utilize our property.
Okay. So you utilize all of it. And I, you may be, and it's, I'm trying to think where, Heights Auto Sales is on the right-hand side, right by TNT?
Yes.
Yeah, right around there. You're pretty much built, pretty much tied up to the street as it is now.
It's not just a little...
You've got a little bit of a setback. Yeah, yeah.
I understand.
Yeah. It may, there are some, yeah.
Arms, you know.
Well, there are some existing businesses that would not be affected by it. Part of it, what we'd like to do is, you know, we would like to have wider sidewalks and things like that, but a lot of it depends on where the public right-of-way is, where things are built right now. But if your business is built that close, I don't, I mean, it's hard for us to look at right now whether you'd be affected.
And I'm not sure why it would devalue your property. I'm trying, I'm...
Well, you make part of the property away, you require a setback, and closer to the property.
No, no, no. We're reducing the setback. So we're allowing people to build closer to the road.
I misunderstood.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're allowing them to build closer?
Yep.
If I was closer, I'd be in one of the...
Yeah. So that's why I'm saying, I'm not sure why it would even affect your property. That's right.
Yeah, we're thinking it.
It'd make a good showroom then, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
How far do you think that'd go? Your overlay?
How far does it go?
East, east.
It only goes, it's basically a long Prospect right now, and it's, it will go in slightly like on Cyberling, there's some B1 or B, not B1, there's some B2.
It's all the business-owned property.
Only the business. You're not, you're not just messing with the residential?
No residential, correct.
Okay.
So there's...
On some of those side streets, there's more, the business zone is wider, more lots, you know, off on the side street, but for the most part, it's Prospect.
Because if you get to Samuel, I think it includes like the, the right behind...
Hair Salon.
It does, yep.
Where the Hair Salon is right over here and, and behind Pearl, right? And where the pizza place is and that, right?
Right.
You get down to Samuel, on the, on the left-hand side behind, there's the Namet Club and all that back there, I think.
Yep. All of that stuff is...
It goes to the alley, basically, in one pass or something.
Exactly, yep.
Yes, sir.
My name is Nick Vasco. We own property at 4810 North Prospect. Does the board have a vision in the future for that section right across the street where it is commercial, but we're wondering in the future, is the vision that some of those properties will be purchased, torn down, and some other larger concern will come in? Is that a vision that you've discussed, or is that an improper question?
Well, and again, we're the zoning board, so we're, we're not the village board, so I can't speak for the village board, but this particular ordinance has nothing to do with buying property or the thought of buying property. It has the thought of, if somebody came in and bought that property and wanted to tear it down and build something else, that they could have some different zoning codes to create this walkable street that we're talking about, is all, that's, that's really all it is. So, as people, as these properties change hands and people start to talk about tearing them down and build bigger buildings or build different things, we want to make sure that the, kind of the charm of Prospect Road remains the charm of Prospect Road, and we don't have big monstrous buildings setback off, you know, with big parking lots in the front and that kind of thing. Yep.
My name's Chad Fuller. We're there in the Heights. This overlay zoning plan, did that come from the board or is that a developer that brought that to the board, the zoning board?
Now, this is, so...
Kathy's...
Kathy and Kathy have been trying to, trying to, you know, develop this thought with the zoning board and the village for a while as the zoning board. So nobody, nobody, no developer came and said, hey, we want to do this per se.
And is this at least partially to encourage businesses or help businesses in the Heights?
It is, yep.
Then, I don't understand why the gentleman that was just here, who was trying to get a little car lot, which is certainly a business on a property that was already a car lot, and no joining property owners complained, why he was denied. That seems to be inconsistent.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the overlay district?
So just to be clear, the first ordinance is just the ordinance that allows the creation of overlay districts, and then the second one, it actually creates the business overlay district. So you're first amending the zoning ordinance to even permit the concept.
All right. Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, my name is Claire Hardman, and I understand what you're talking about, trying to keep Carter down Prospect. Could you explain more about how that affects people that are a block behind there that you're including in this overlay district?
The block behind which way? I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
It's only, it's only the business properties that are behind going up Cyberling, up Samuel here to the east.
And I understand what you're explaining on Prospect. Can you explain how that helps the people that are behind?
Well, so, so if you think about over here on the Pearl property, it's, I think it's Pearl, I don't know, on Samuel and Prospect, right?
Take, take something...
Well, Samuel and Prospect, Samuel and Prospect...
Take the Navy Marine Club there.
Well, I don't think it would really affect the Navy Marine Club very much because they're already built up to the sidewalk, they're part of that, if you look down that street, they're part of a street wall that comes in.
Okay, so this is the side streets up to that point?
Yep.
So they're included in this?
Yep.
South edge. There's some east and west included in this also.
Just, just to the alleys and maybe one property behind the alleys. So if you took, what I was going to explain is if you took Samuel up here on the east, on the west side of Samuel, where that property on Samuel and Prospect is set way back, right? Lots of, lots of yard space because the setbacks are 25 feet on each side, it would allow that to come up more to the street, and the same with like the Heights Bank could have built up closer to the street and done more of a corridor street going down. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the amendment of the code to allow for overlay districts.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Tessie Buckler. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Sarah DeBoer. Any other discussion? Okay. I'll call the roll, please.
Rick Pitzel?
Aye.
Kathy Stevenson?
Aye.
Sarah DeBoer, aye. Tessie Buckler?
Aye.
Steve Katy?
Aye.
Mike Wu?
Aye.
Craig Masters?
Yep, that's everyone. Okay. All ayes, no nays. Okay, so then the second part of that, or the next item on the agenda is the ordinance 281571, an ordinance designating the Peoria Heights Downtown Overlay District and approving the plan that shall apply within the district. Again, this has been posted, but basically, we have the actual overlay district and the regulations within the overlay district. Quite extensive, it talks about residential uses, dual uses, setbacks, building heights, storefronts, projected awnings and canopies, sidewalk width, sidewalk dining, utilities, signage, et cetera. So any discussion on that? Any changes? Any thoughts from the board? We've all seen it for weeks, so...
Yeah.
Anybody in the audience have any other comments on the overlay district? Okay, we need a motion to approve the plan for the overlay district, for the Peoria Heights Downtown Overlay District.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion and seconded. Call the roll.
Aye.
Kathy Stevenson?
Aye.
Sarah DeBoer, aye. Tessie Buckler?
Aye.
Steve Katy?
Aye.
Mike Wu?
Aye.
Craig Masters?
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, no nays. Okay. Okay. So then the, next on the agenda is the variance application filed by PH Samuel LLC for Samuel Avenue Residence, Residential Housing Project. So the application for zoning here in, here in Katy Kim on behalf of Peoria Heights Samuel LLC, assume Katy's here somewhere, she can, and, so the application itself has, so, yes, I was trying to figure out what I'm going to read here because that's a lot of words. This addendum is hereby added to incorporating the zoning application dated September 24, 2018, submitted by PH Samuel LLC. As a developer, owner and/or developer submitted to the village of Peoria Heights, provision applicable in addition to or in place of, as the case may be, prescriptions of the zoning application to which this document is an addendum. So this was an addendum to the, to the zoning application. It's the list of parcels and parcel information to the zoning application. As stated in the TIF redevelopment agreement, Exhibit A, the developer owns or will acquire the property and intends to undertake both commercial and residential development thereon, which will include the construction of multi-unit commercial building and not less than seven townhomes. Current real estate, parcel address, parcel ID, legal description, owned by Samuel LLC are under contract as follows. 1315 East Samuel Avenue. And here's where we have a change. The next, the next four that are listed here, 1317 East Samuel, 1319 East Samuel, 1321 East Samuel, and 1325 East Samuel, are going to be removed tonight from discussion, correct?
Correct.
As those properties have been sold. So they are no longer owned by PH Samuel LLC.
1317?
17, 19, 21, and 25. 1331 East Samuel, 1419 East Samuel, 1310 East Samuel, 1314 East Samuel, 1324 East Samuel, 1336 East Samuel, 1404 East Samuel, 1406 East Samuel, 1408 East Samuel, 1412 East Samuel, 1424 East Samuel, and 1426 East Samuel, 1430 East Samuel. The developer is required to go back to the original plat and lines as we recorded. The developer has included a copy of the original plat for reference, confirming with the purity counter, developer would not need to rezone these properties in order to go back to the original parcels, be done administratively legally prior to closing for the lot lines. So if it's a 30, if it's still a 30-foot lot, it's a 30-foot lot, basically, is what it's saying. But the developer is requesting the following setbacks, a front yard setback to be 10 feet, a rear yard setback to be 10 feet, a side yard setback to be 3 feet on each side, so there would be 6 feet between each house if, if there was two of the same on, next to each other. Side yard setback for garages and decks of 1 foot is what the developer is requesting. The developer is requesting a minimum lot size for a single parcel to be 30 by 125 or 3,750 square feet, which is in line with the original plat dimensions and some of the current parcel dimensions. So, that was a lot of property addresses and information.
And Mr. Chairman, just one clarification on all of those addresses that you rattled off, the very last one, 1430 East Samuel, I also confirm it is not owned by PH Samuel LLC.
Okay.
So that would, there's five that are being removed from the list.
Can I ask a question? I don't know if this is like the wrong time to ask this, but what happens to those properties? Like if we change the zoning on the rest of these, what about the ones that are, that were removed?
They just don't have a variance.
So then, they would set to what the standard is that we're not asking to be changed?
Correct.
So then the look of the street, like the whole mode for like the look of the street to be the same now isn't because now we have five properties that did not follow that?
Well, true, but even, even the properties that were named are only about, I'm going to, I'm going to use a broad guess, but about 50% of the properties, maybe it's 60, I don't know. But, so there's a number of properties that aren't included in that list that are on that street in the first place, right? And yeah, and these five now would not, if, if we granted variances for those setbacks and lot size, for the rest of the properties that are still on the list, those five would not be included.
Could you just repeat the, the fifth one?
Yeah, it's the last one, 1430 East Samuel.
Thank you.
Do you have another question on that? Go ahead.
I understand, I'm just thinking that, so someone purchased these homes, can I ask, Katie, are these somebody building on these, these properties or these are just sold out, right? We have no idea what's happening to them, they're going to stay as they are?
Yeah, come on up.
I just, I'm not hearing what you're, I can normally talk loud, but...
Perfect. Nope, that's perfect. That's where we want you to talk.
Yeah, perfect. So yeah, so those, those lots were sold, and it was actually a closing that got delayed and just happened last week. So we needed to get the approval from them because as of this date, we don't officially own them. However, as of the original date, we did when we submitted it. So we will want the variance for those lots, however, because of the timing of that close... You can't ask for them, they have to ask for them. Correct. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yep. That's right.
But these homes are going to be removed and rebuilt, yes? Yes. Okay. In time, I mean... I understand. I just feel like if we're going to approve this, that these, is there some way that we can make it so that they have, if we approve it, can we make it so that these properties have to have that requirement as well?
We can't find any other owner that isn't before the zoning board.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
I mean, because in the, in the end, they, I mean, right, they're not here, so, and they're not saying, hey, that is what I'm doing or that's not what I'm doing, so...
Got it. Okay.
Why would they have been sold? I'm just curious, what, if you, you had ownership of them, they kind of completed a mass there?
We sold them to our partner in the project, our builder, who is, you know, in the process of actually carrying out the vision of the project, and are, held in our agreement to those setbacks, and we will be coming back next month with their permission and everything like that for...
So every, every property that you have right now will be sold to them eventually?
Not to them. I mean, not, that's unknown at this time. I can't say, yes, they would be sold to them, or they would be sold directly to the new owner of the home, or if it would be sold to another builder.
of the home, or if it'd be sold to another builder. Ideally, when we first submitted, in, in kind of the spirit of how we did that redevelopment agreement that said, "Here's our area," we wanted to, to basically have, in essence, an overlay district for those two blocks. But as of previous, that wasn't allowed and permitted. And then, two, we submitted that originally, and again, conditional zoning on property that we don't own can't happen, so we couldn't do it in that same spirit, so... Which is why we've adjusted to have just the parcels that we currently have under contract.
Okay. And this was, these closings were, you said they were delayed. They were originally scheduled for, when to be closed on?
Uh, prior, well, they were just, there weren't gonna be... Which closing are you talking about?
The four that we're talking about over the weekend?
So the four in the 1317 and 1325, that closing just happened, I believe, last week.
Okay, and you said it had been delayed, I was just curious. So is it September was supposed to close, or?
I don't remember that off the top of my head, I have to look at the contract.
Okay, so...
Does anyone have figures there of what the current setbacks are? That they would be deviating from?
Yeah, we do. So, um, it gets complicated, because we're talking about three different types of zoning here. So we have R1 zoning on some of the properties, we have R2 zoning on some of the properties, and we have R3 zoning on some of the properties. So if you, if you visualize going from Prospect East, the first block is, um, broken up, but it's, there's R3 in the first properties. And then as you get close to Columbus, they change to R2. And then as you get to the second block, between Columbus and Samuel, there's R1. So in R1, so I'm, now I'm, I'll start with R3. So R3, working down the block going east, the front yard is 25 foot. A side yard is, uh, is the greater of 1/5 the height of the building or less, not less than 10% of the lot width. Figure that one out. And then the rear yard is greater of 15% of the depth, not less than 10 feet or 1/3 the height. So R3 is a bit confusing if you don't know exactly what you're building on it, what your setbacks are.
Now, Rick, that would be for the multifamily, the multifamily unit. For the single family, it would revert back to R2, correct?
Pardon?
For a single family, if it's a single-family home, it would convert back to the R2, was my understanding?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, that's...
Does it say that? I don't think so. If I can look that up, but I... So let's just go by R3, but there's, there's a number of lots that are in R3, and even though, because we don't know what's necessarily being built on them, then they, all we know is what's on R3. R2, and then there's different setbacks for accessory buildings. So if it's an accessory, uh, building on the rear of the lot, single two, it's the same as R2, which we'll get to, and if it's a sex, and if, I mean, if it's accessory building on the front part of the lot, it's the same as R2. If it's on the rear part of the lot, um, it's the same as R2, so... Then R2, front yard is 25 feet, the side yard is not less than 10% of the width of the lot. A rear yard of not less than 15 feet.
I'm not gonna ask you to go into all the details, but here's my question. These each have different setbacks, but this is, would they be all the same?
Correct. That is what the variance request is requesting.
And is the, the, the front, would that be measured from the curb line?
Property line. So it's from the property line back, the normal setback in all three of these, R1, R2, R3, is 25 feet. The sidewalk's usually on village property, so that's not...
So the setback is from, let's say, the center of the sidewalk?
Well, no, it's probably, the edge of the sidewalk. Right, the sidewalk edge closest to the house, you could guess that's probably pretty close to where your property line starts. So 25, 25 feet back from that would be the normal.
I wouldn't ask you to go through all the other details.
So Katie, do you wanna just kind of explain what your plan is for these lots that you're requesting the variance on? Whatever detail you can give us on those lots that you're requesting the variances on, and then we'll go from there.
Yep, the reason for the, the request for the setbacks is, again, the 25-foot setback line. And Bob, I think to your question, to look at what the existing setback is in that street, it's a lot less than 25 feet. And, I mean, we went off GIS, so I can be happy to share that with you if you want, of what existing. But when we looked at the setbacks, we wanted to make sure that if we didn't, if we didn't purchase a house, that then our new development wouldn't have the existing homes here, and then the new home, like, weighs setback, 25 feet. Plus, if you think it's 125-foot-deep lot, and you're taking 25 feet right off there, you got 100 foot, which still sounds like a lot, but then when you start doing the structure of the garage, and you know, some area back there, I mean, it eats, plus the rear setback, it really eats up that lot pretty quick.
My concern is I'd like to see some sort of uniformity.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the variance, and we could build, and what you're saying, some may not.
They have, yeah.
Yeah, and with our restrictions, when we sell a lot, I apologize, can I...
That's okay, yeah.
When we sell a lot, those setback restrictions are put into the contract and are more like a deed restriction type of thing. So anything we would sell would have that restriction, because we can only control what we have ownership of, and ideally, I would like it to be, like, an overlay district. So you would have not only, you know, this street, but the other streets, 'cause it's, I can't say it's in line with every street, but it's in line with the majority of the houses in the setback from the front yard side, for sure. And I think that, that visual, kinda like what we're looking, or what you guys are looking to do with the business overlay district, it gets that uniformity. So to that point...
Is it your vision, or would be aligned there?
It would be my vision to come back and, and request similar, either an overlay district, because again, I can't put zoning on houses that we don't own. And, you know, again, some of the recent sales kinda juggled the property, as you saw tonight. But ideally, that would be what I would wish to have happen, you know? But it's dependent on a lot of things, I mean, dependent on... But I, I think it's more uniform, when it's more uniform, it's, again, it's just visually appealing and, and it works better, but, you know...
If you look at the, going down Samuel East on the north side of the street, so the properties with the odd-numbered addresses, 1311... Pardon?
There are very few on this list that are...
Yeah, but the, and the four that we just took off the list are on that, in that number. But I kinda stepped it off. The house itself is 25 feet back from, kinda, the property line. The porch abuts out into what is, what would be the, the front yard. So the setbacks currently in that zoning, and I think most of those houses were probably built before the zoning code was established in 1970, and that's why the porches, why there is a 25-foot house setback, but the porch juts out. And most R1, or R1 allows for that. So R1 only measures from the inhabitable house to the property line and doesn't include a porch. Whereas R2 and R3 do include porches, so that's another consideration. As you look at those setbacks on that street, like she said, they're all kinda, if you looked at the houses, they're all kind of in a row, right at about 25 feet, and then they all have porches on the front. So my guess is that they were all kinda considered, kinda, R1 before they were considered R3, so... Okay, so you can continue, yeah?
Okay. Kinda got thrown off there. So yeah, so to, to take the lots back originally, and I know a public record with the previous meetings say that originally, when we started thinking about the project, we were thinking about a 25-foot lot line. With some feedback, we went to the 30-foot lot, so we're gonna have less houses than we originally were, but that was updated in our last meeting prior to the vote of the redevelopment agreement. So that's the same. But the 30-foot lot line really, again, keeps with that size. So again, if a house is not purchased for the development, but yet is later sold, and they would want to construct a house similar to what we're constructing, it wouldn't look out of place. And that was another motivational factor, to go to the 30-foot wide lot on those sides. And then looking at, you know, the side setbacks and, in there, looking at kinda how the houses are spaced currently, and then what we would need for, you know, and that's a minimum. Some of the, the proposed floor plans are only 20-foot wide, and so then you would have, you know, 5 foot on each side, but we're going for that minimum side setback. And the same thing with the rear yard, it's that minimum. So not to say every single one would be going back that far, but it would depend on what they would be choosing to build.
Questions?
Do you have a bunch here in the audience?
Did anybody up here have a question first? No?
Well, so you're requesting a, a 3-foot minimum side setback.
Correct.
Okay. And what, I, I don't have it here.
But that's on, that's on, on principal structure. 3 foot.
So what were you, there was a 1 foot for a garage?
For the garage, or a porch, if they would want a porch.
Accessory, accessory or a porch.
That's a detached, though.
We were just saying garage, we didn't specify detached or attached.
Okay. Because...
If it's attached, then it would be part of the primary structure, so it would be the 3-foot. So that would be... I, I think one of the things that we need to understand in order to make the assessments is just what is going on the lots. Because we haven't seen anything in terms of total dimensions, square footage, of what is going on the lot. And to, to do this, we really need to understand what is going on the lot. We need to understand where your survey pins are, so that we can take a look at what is a realistic setback based on those other houses, and not just guess, because, I mean, you look at one side of the street, there's clearly a different setback than on the other side of the street. So to make sure of that. And so at this point, do you have that information? Did you bring that with you tonight?
We did not do the lot pins, but we did, from our, our vision book, and again, because these houses will be, you know, designed build, so it depends on which owner buys the lot and which floor plan they want, or if they wanna go with the whole new floor plan, which is why we're trying to give those parameters to, to make sure that we are in uniform as much as we possibly can. You know, and looking at those, in terms of the square foot, if we say, look at, you know, Plan A, and again, looking at the different square footage, I mean, there is an option to have, and this is with the main floor and the second floor, you know, 1,678 square feet. If they would want an additional third floor, that would go up to, you know, about 2,100.
So I'm sorry, the, the first, is that the smallest unit?
The smallest unit would be 820 square feet on the first floor.
He said Plan A, so all I have is a visual of one floor, floor plan of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 houses, basically. So is it the first one on the left?
From the vision book, I'd have to go back and, and look and see. I'd have to bring that information back to you, as to which one that layout is on that site plan.
Okay.
Because there's, each, again, each, each zone, R1, R2, R3, has different stipulations. And so as we're going through assessing each one of these, we have to look at it according to those, and there's a number of variances that would be additional. For instance, so if you've got a 3,750-foot square lot, and there's 6,000-square-foot lots, that's a variance in the lot coverage, how much, how large of a house you can build on that, 'cause there's a restriction in terms of the percent of lot coverage you'd have for a variety of reasons, but, so those are issues that we can't get at without having the information. And when we met with you last week, one of the things was, you know, we could, if you gave us the largest one, but we need at, we need height, we need the, the square footage, the dimensions, in order for us to make that, that type of assessment. Because without that, we, we would be granting variances, not knowing what's going to be built there. And you understand that, that would be difficult. And we're trying to balance the needs of, of the homeowners that are already living there and that will be there, 'cause this is, it's kind of a subdivision plan, if you will, that's an, in an infill situation. And so we need to make sure that infilling the homes is gonna, you know, be, really balance the needs of the existing homeowners, and then the, the future development for the village and the direction they wanna go as well.
Yeah, and on our largest plan, I mean, we're, you know, we're about 75% of that lot coverage on the largest plan with everything all in. So, I mean, again, the hard part to answer that is that they will be designed build. They will be, you know, I mean, we have, again, those five, five districts.
What you're missing is that site plan, because I spent all day Monday down there talking to different people. Some of the houses are small, okay, that, that did not sell, the people have been there for 30 years. And if we grant you building up to 3 feet from the lot line, and you put up a two-story house that overshadows both front and side yard, this little house, those people aren't happy. Okay? And the second aspect that you touched on, but you didn't go far enough, is when you build this house, whether, whether you get the 3-foot variance enacted or not, people wanna know where the lot lines are. They want to see the pins, okay? We required them on some other jobs, just like the one right up here at, on the Kingman behind the tower here, that that's the main objection to the neighbors, "I wanna see the pins." Okay, that, that's a prevailing thought, you know? So that's, I don't know, I, with how the site planned, and so that everybody knows, if, if anybody is sitting here in their houses is gonna be overshadowed or dwarfed by something else, they need to know it now. Not, not in the future, not some spec by year down the line, you know? The idea, development is good, yeah, I like it. But the people living here also have a right, because they were here first.
Absolutely.
So we have to see a plan.
Yep, and, and to that point, we will be putting the pins and getting that in place. We, from that feedback, we weren't able to get it scheduled with that, but that will be scheduled probably within the next week on those, and we're gonna also have the pins of the ones that were sold, done. And in terms of, of height, to your point, I mean, we could build taller now from some of those houses that are already there. So height-wise, we're not asking for any variance. Again, we'll go back through every single thing again, but in terms of height...
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about your building house, I'm just talking in general, two-story home, next to a Sears, a Best, a Craftsman home or something that's relatively small, 900 square foot.
Yeah.
And if you're building right next to, within 3 feet to the lot line, it's gonna be kinda small feeling while you're sitting in your house.
What does the current zone say about that, though? Like, what is it right now, like, if...
Depending, right now, in R1 and R2, you could build a, a 35-foot structure. So right now, it allows it that you could build 35 feet as it is today. However, the lot size would not be as narrow. The lot size would be a minimum of 6,000, I believe, in both of those.
Okay.
So a little bit different.
So I think we had a couple, a couple comments, so let's start with chat.
Okay, thank you. Just for clarification, I thought when you started off, you used the word "commercial." Is any of the Samuel property, are you planning to convert that to commercial property?
So we are not planning on converting any of the property on Samuel to commercial, however, to make a clarification of, in real estate law, anything... however, to make a clarification of, in real estate law, anything over four units is technically classified as a commercial property, but it would be multi-tenant.
And who is "we"? Who are "you"?
"We" being part of the PH Samuel LLC ownership.
Okay. The petition that we've been discussing, who brought that before the board tonight? What entity, what legal entity?
The PH...
PH Samuel LLC.
And do they own all of the property that we've been talking about?
So, all the ones that I read, they own.
They own, but there's some that they...
But there's, that's about 60-ish percent or something of the ones on the street.
So I think that that property could not be decided on tonight.
Right.
Is that correct?
Correct. And that's why we removed those five that she just sold also from that list.
There might have been a mention of, I don't know if you mentioned "commercial"...
The thing with "commercial" is, and I think it was mentioned in that first part, was, goes back to the development agreement. And I think originally, and we had this picture, right, of a, of a four-story or whatever, three, four-story condo building that's kind of, would be on the south side of the street, I think, beside, behind the BFL parking lot there on Samuel. And I think in the original TIF commercial development agreement...
In the orig, yes.
It said something about the first floor would be commercial and the rest of the floors would be residential. That's not a zoning board issue, that was just how it was stated in her writing per se, right? That's more of a TIF district issue. And we would have to take that up if she did want to put "commercial" in there, we would have to then...
I'm getting the impression from some of the questions on the board that you really don't know what's going to be built there. It sounds like we need some more information.
That's right. And that's, I think, what we said about the houses, we haven't even got to the other side of the street with this building, but right now, in the, in the variance request, there's just four 30-by-125 lots there that she's asking for variances on, on that side of the street too. So whether that becomes one property and she builds a condo, or it becomes four properties and she builds four single houses, she was just asking for variances for the setback, and that's plain all she's asking for.
Is the board going to look into that?
Yeah. So, I think where we're at on all this is, and was what Kathy said and what we kind of talked about last week, is if you could bring the plan of, here's what I'm building on these first two, and I want variances for these first two, then we could talk about those first two and then work on what happens with the rest of them. But we really need to know what's being built on the property to understand setbacks and et cetera. So that's just my...
Now, should you go 10 foot, front step over the back to the front yard? Are we going to do all trees? There will be no more trees on our street, is that what you're saying?
That's actually 10 foot from that sidewalk area. So yeah, we actually want to keep the trees, I mean...
That's what you said, but it's in the back set, you need to keep the trees.
Yeah, we will. 10 foot from the sidewalk, yeah.
I think, I think before we make, we need to identify where the pins are and determine what is 10 feet and what, where that, because no one really knows that right now. So we're just all, everybody's guessing. So I think we need to identify where the pins are, and then we can identify where that actual setback would be based on your 10 feet, and then, because we aren't able to make a judgment on that tonight.
No. And you're both kind of right, some of the trees are out in, you know, in the right-of-way, in that green space, and some of the trees are right up by the houses, which would be probably 10 feet from the sidewalk. So you're both, I think, technically right on depending on which property you're talking about, but...
Well, I feel like she's still living, so I know with all the construction work, those trees are gone. You know, no big trees are gone with all the construction work. You can't walk around, I know that.
There is part of, and I know these are not mature trees, and I'm a tree lover, so I hear what you're saying, but there is part of the development plan, the development agreement, is that there would be a streetscape along Prospect, and that's something that we would want to work with the village on. I'm sorry, on Samuel, on Samuel. That's part of the project and the village, that's part of the infrastructure that the village would be undertaking. And that's something that we want to make sure that we're part of as well, to make sure it's consistent with the rest of the community and whatever else we take elsewhere. So there would be trees being planted and kind of, you know, that hasn't been identified yet, but...
They take 35ers.
No, I understand that, I understand that. So preserving what you can...
I was going to say, they're not going to be, they're not going to be 40-foot trees.
Right. No, I understand that, but...
Our first conversation, you know, why does it love all the trees? Now she's trying to get the back sets pushed up forward, well, that's just going to wipe out all the trees on those blocks.
Well, and that's where, and we'll confirm where those pin lines are, because if, if we're wrong and needing that 10-foot setback to stay in line with those houses, then we'll adjust that. Because as much of those mature trees as we can keep, now you're right, when you start digging a foundation, you're going to affect the root system, and some of those are going to die. Some of them don't have any trees in front of them, you know, so like 13, 15, and I think 13, 17 don't have like a tree right in front of them, they would be a new tree planted, but you're right, I mean, it's going to take time for the tree to grow and be mature. And Samuel's actually one of the streets that has mature trees on it.
So you're trying to get 10 foot back to that block of the tree on sidewalk, but basically you want Chicago to come down, you're on the street.
I want to...
And up Chicago, I hate Chicago.
I want to keep the setbacks, so it doesn't look like you have an older house here, and then you have a new house that's back another, you know, 10, 15 feet. So once we get the pins, we'll be able to identify not just off the GIS map what those actual setbacks are.
So, sir, what was your name? I'm sorry.
I'm Jeff Matts, I'm on 1337 Samuel.
Okay, thank you. As you speak, could you please say your name and your address, so we know? Yeah, yeah, I didn't ask that in the beginning, most people did, and you didn't, so it's fine. Sir?
Yeah, Mike Swain, 1418 East Samuel. My question is, just the backpedal, the variance that you're talking about, so if they build the new and in the existing houses, do the houses, if they don't necessarily sell, do they have to conform to the new?
No, nothing's changing with any property that's not sold or being changed.
Okay.
She's asking for the ones that she owns to have a different setback on those.
I didn't know if you were talking about, I mentioned not having the houses that I understand are from somewhere here, it's over there, I didn't know if there was a thing with the profit lines and that sort of thing, we had to conform to that.
No.
No?
You answered, but no.
Okay.
Nope.
Is it here?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Sue Swanson.
Sue Swan.
1332 Samuel. So, I'm confused, are you planning to keep the lots you've got, or will you be randomly selling them to other, like, you did to other floors?
Yeah, our goal is to sell the, right now, as a developer, our goal is to sell the lots and to have it prepped, ready for a buyer to come and build the house that they want to build on that lot within the given setbacks. That's been our plan. So when we had some builders come and say, we'll agree to build it how you want to build it, and, and they purchased the lots to start getting those, because they have clients that are interested. And so that's where we need to make sure that we can have them build what we, you know, what we've kind of outlined to build in that process. So that's why it's hard to say what exactly is going in on there. We're starting, my husband and I has planned house plans, so we should have those finalized by the end of the week to say what's going on that lot with certainty. And then the investors have, have stated that they're going to go ahead with a spec house as well, so we can say what that plan is going to be. We should be finalizing that as well this week. So those plans, we would be able to have at the end of this week to be able to share with the zoning board, which we were hoping to have last week, but some final decisions needed to be made.
And then what is your timeline for the rest of the, I mean, will you be raising buildings to new homes soon? I mean, one year or...
No, we, I mean, right now, we are going to, we have renters in a lot of those houses, almost all of them, and so we are looking to rent those buildings. And in part of the lease, they, one, have an addendum that says exactly what's going on in the development, and, so that they're aware of it going in. And they, a couple of them that we have needed to move forward with in terms of our earlier phase, we've actually relocated them to other houses on the street.
Okay, do you have a timeline on those?
It's all demand-based.
Until the variances are approved, and then actually, anything in R3 has to have a site plan, so before they can get a building permit, they have to have a site plan approval, and we'd have to prove the variances. So those steps need to take place before that would happen.
On top of though, you're not going to build houses on these lots, you're going to keep the lot until someone else wants to purchase it and build a home.
Yeah, and we're keeping, again, keeping the house, keeping everything intact.
Correct, until someone wants to build. So it could be...
Absolutely.
Three years, it could be next year, like, you don't really know.
It could be next year, it could be three years, it could be five years, it could be seven years. It could never happen on some of the lots. I mean, to be completely honest, yeah, absolutely.
Do you have a timeline for your, the house that you and your husband are building? When you think that, once that's finalized, the floor plan...
As long as we can keep it green, it will be within the next year. It's harder when you do your own house.
So like, spring, you're thinking, or...
Spring, we'd be looking to break ground. We ideally were hoping to get it in this fall, but it doesn't look like it's going to happen. Katie, so, and we currently live on Samuel too, I mean, so we would be looking to lease the, sorry, sir.
No, you're fine.
Looking to lease the house that we would move out of.
Okay. So, we have all these questions on like, how it's going to look, what people are going to build there. So since you can't answer that per se, because you don't know what someone's going to build, do you have like a list of requirements that will, it will have to be?
Absolutely, yes.
So like a full, like, I think that it would help some people to see like, a full list of like, yes, I'll sell you this property, we'll build you this home, but these are, these are the things that have to be required to do that.
Absolutely, we'll definitely send that over.
And then, how many homes do you, as we were, Rick was talking about, that some of the lots were like 50% or something originally, when we looked at, if you took the 18 that you had submitted and subdivided those into 30? How, how many, in the development agreement, Exhibit 1, it says seven, how many do you look to, to build? What is your...
That really depends on, you know, there were properties that we were told that people would never sell, that have sold to us. So, you know, it really, if you look at the plat, I mean, it really would depend on how many we would either acquire, or, again, some of the builders may go out and negotiate with those homeowners and get them direct.
So of the eight, so let's say you still own the 18 that were here, and they were subdivided, and they would be, I don't know, 25 or 26, something around that number. I know four of them would go to the multifamily resident. Are you planning, is that your goal, is to build on all those, or would you, to build your plans on all of those?
Yes, on all those. And some of the lots are 30 by 30, are 30 by 125 right now. So for all the lots that we had on, say, the north side of the street, I think, and I'm going off memory here because I can't see the plat, but I think you're looking at, there were five lots, those would be turned into seven. So not adding a lot, and that's, again, that's what it was originally plotted at.
And the other thing is, is just, I do have a question on, when you chose the plan and the topography of the street itself, how did your architect assume he was going to address that with, you know, you've got, actually, the house that you guys live in right now is, you know, 12 feet above the street, so that next to, the house next to it is substantially different. How, how do you address that, and then with the streetscape that you've shown in your diagrams? I'm just curious how that looked.
Well, in that last portion, that last part of the block, when it really deeps down into the hill, we've thrown around a lot of ideas on that, and again, it really depends on the continuity we have in those lots, and again, who's there. So that's where, I mean, that house that we live in, I mean, it sits so far back from the street that you could drive by there and not even know there's a house there. I mean, with the landscaping how it is, so...
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Don?
Yep, Don.
Some of the questions that have been asked that I had, but in following this through the last year or so, I see a lot of issues that possibly crop up, and you kind of alluded to it in some of the answers to that. The increased density on that block is going to be doubled?
No, that's why we went back to that original plat. So the original plat from 19, what is it, 20, I don't have that date exactly on there, has a 30-foot by 125-foot lot line. So we went from originally, when we originally, originally proposed it, we did a 25-foot lot line, because that would give us more density in houses. However, sinking it through, saying, again, we're not going to get every house on that block, having a lot of this and then having that, and looking at how we divide it and all the costs associated with it, we, we went back to that original plat, and it's a lot, it's a lot smoother in terms of the flow of the lots.
So, the answer to that, in the first block on the north side, there's nine houses and it would be 12 lots, so there's three extra houses. On the south side, though, it's, it's nine houses and there's currently four, or, nine lots and there, there's currently four houses, not including the four that may become a condo or something. So just those ones from your house on.
Yeah, I think, and I just look at this, as owning that property for over 64 years, you know, I see, I see a lot of questions that need to be answered. The one thing was the topography that Kathy had mentioned about, you know, there's, there's a number of issues, and I'm concerned of the infrastructure, because I remember the first presentation that I heard is this is designated as a high ground, old homes. Infrastructure is just as old in that area. You know, I can't speak for other homeowners, but I know several that we have raw sewage back up in our basement and that, so these issues have to be addressed. If you grant a variance, increasing the density in the area, what's the capacity of the infrastructure in place? And I think that's a key, key question that needs to be answered.
Absolutely. So...
And even, you know, the water, the water lines, star sewers and that, they've been there as long as I own the house. And so that, that's a key component, because you can build whatever these homes are going to cost, but if you don't have the infrastructure, the blood to pay bills home, it's going to be a problem.
Yep, so to address that question, you know, we've, we've had raw sewage back up in our basement multiple times. We've had to rotor-ruder the lines multiple times. You know, we've never had to do that at any other house we've lived in. So it's definitely giving a lot of eye-opening to the situation of the infrastructure on that street. Again, the variances that we are asking are not increasing the density from what it was originally created for. Now, that still does not mean that existing infrastructure can handle that. And part in our redevelopment agreement, we have that after we get a certain EAV amount, so a certain amount of structures that are in there built, that there triggers an infrastructure improvement, which means new, what in the scope means, new streets, new sewer, new water, you know, infrastructure lines in terms of like an internet. We look at sidewalks on both sides of the street, we put in streetlights there, we put in doing the alley, actually a crosswise between Glen to Samuel, Samuel to Durier, on those cross sidewalk, alley streets, and then back down the alley. And then the same way on the south side of Samuel to Durier on the, on the back there, because the alley doesn't go all the way continuous on the north side. So there's an actual map in there that shows exactly where that's allocated. So because we did at that time, we do the due diligence, we contacted GPSD, and we can show you the emails that we got back from them saying, technically, this is how the plat was set up, this is how the, the infrastructure was sized, that doesn't mean that it doesn't need to be updated, and that was part of what we said with our redevelopment agreement that we want to do. And that cost is, again, that scope of work was estimated and there in the cost of, and some contingency, again, for the timing of, of cost of materials increase, has about a $1.5 million infrastructure. And that's $1.5 million of infrastructure on those streets that doesn't come out of the village funds. It doesn't come out of the current public work funds. It comes out of the increment that we create with those parcels that we own and develop or sell to develop. So the current residents would also get the benefit of having $1.5 million of infrastructure work done. And in walking down that street at night, a couple of times, it's, it's dark. You know, when I walk down with my kids, I mean, we have a flashlight with us to make sure. So that infrastructure work and those improvements, and I'm probably missing one of the improvements, but we looked at how do we really want that street to look? Yep, so to address that question, you know, we've, we've had raw sewage back up in our basement multiple times. We've had to rotor-ruder the lines multiple times. You know, we've never had to do that at any other house we've lived in. So it's definitely giving a lot of eye-opening to the situation of the infrastructure on that street. Again, the variances that we are asking are not increasing the density from what it was originally created for. Now, that still does not mean that existing infrastructure can handle that, and part of, in our redevelopment agreement, we have that after we get a certain EAV amount, so a certain amount of structures that are in there built, that there triggers an infrastructure improvement, which means new, what in the scope means, new streets, new sewer, new water, you know, infrastructure lines in terms of like, an internet. We look at sidewalks on both sides of the street, we put in streetlights there, we put in doing the alley, actually a crosswise between Glen to Samuel, Samuel to Durie, on those cross sidewalk, alley streets, and then back down the alley. And then the same way on the south side of Samuel to Durie on, on the back there, because the alley doesn't go all the way continuous on the north side. So there's an actual map in there that shows exactly where that's allocated. So, because we did at that time, we do the due diligence, we contacted GPSD, and we can show you the emails that we got back from them, saying technically, this is how the plat was set up, this is how the, the infrastructure was sized, that doesn't mean that it doesn't need to be updated, and that was part of what we said with our redevelopment agreement that we want to do. And that cost is, again, that scope of work was estimated and there, in the cost of, and some contingency, again, for the timing of, of cost of materials increase, has about a $1.5 million infrastructure. And that's $1.5 million of infrastructure on those streets that doesn't come out of the village funds. It doesn't come out of the current public work funds. It comes out of the increment that we create with those parcels that we own and develop, or sell to develop. So, the current residents would also get the benefit of having $1.5 million of infrastructure work done. And in walking down that street at night, a couple of times, it's, it's dark. You know, when I walk down with my kids, I mean, we have a flashlight with us, to make sure. So, that infrastructure work and those improvements, and I'm probably missing one of the improvements, but we looked at, how do we really want that street to look, and really set the precedent for it, to be that improvement. And if you look at all the conditions of that, the investor group is the backstop, if the bond coverage doesn't work, if it, if it goes higher and it needs that, or our properties don't get assessed. You know, we're, on one hand, as residents, I guess blessed, you would say, that our property tax, you know, the evaluation of it, I'm not saying the rate, that's a different story, but the evaluation, if you look at the EAV evaluation, has been going down. I'm not saying the tax rate's going down, I'm saying the evaluation of that EAV has gone down. And so, looking at that, being able to have, and that's really why the importance for us is really focusing on that condo building, because that gets that, a big part to that EAV, to start kicking off that. So if you look at our project in terms of that, then you're gonna have, you know, the infrastructure kicked off at that point. So those are the triggers for that.
Yes, sir.
We are not gonna create a new alley on that north side of the street, because at the time when we were negotiating the redevelopment agreement, we didn't have a majority of the homes on that side of the street, and it was decided by engineers that if we were gonna do that, we would have to do a lot of restructure work, and again, since we didn't have the ownership of that point, we did not.
If you were to own those lots, a 30-foot block doesn't allow for a driveway.
This one?
No.
So-
Does not.
Where would the access to the garage come from?
Currently on that street, all the access to the houses are in front. So it would have to be reworked.
The alley may have existed one time.
According to the property, the property lines in the GIS, there is actually a similar layout of what's on the south side. It comes down, splits the block, and then it actually curves back, or not curves, but comes 90 back to Samuel. So it's, it's there. We haven't dug into those property tax records for the lot that's right adjacent to that, to see if they've, you know, acquired it since it's been abandoned, we haven't looked at that.
Any other questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
My name's Lee Hartford, and I live at 1311 East, and I'm the guy that, I'm the first house. So, if you're gonna have the ability to bring, that alley's fine, that's fine, if people get in and out of the car. That alley is a single lane alley. Same with the alley that comes along Mason Bean. Now, the cars come off the same, and return under that alley, if there's a car coming the other way, they have to turn into Mason Bean's parking lot, and let that car come down before they go on. Somewhere along the line, that's gonna go on that alley. Now, I did not build my house, I bought it. My garage is on the lot, so that means that they can build or put away from my garage. Now, my garage was built so everybody would have something to hit when they turn on that alley. And they hit it so much, that I thought were the best, because how she's be, those are the people that own these, her, L C. There is a unit that goes with the telephone, with the telephone company. I guarantee you, these every three months, they come out there to repair that, since I've lived here, since I owned the properties since 1990. The traffic does get there, that alley is going to have to be widened, in order for traffic to come in and out there for those houses. There's just no other way to look. My house, again, I did not build it. I don't have two feet between me and the alley, and where the city has come over my property, I don't have a foot there at the corner. And now Pearl has bought that house right there, that's on the alley, and I'm Glen. And they paid about $112,000 for that house, and they put way more into it. It's a beautiful home. They are right on me alley too. Now, they put vulgar up there to stop that traffic from doing it, which of course makes people come over to my house even more. But somewhere along the line, that alley is gonna have to be expanded to get traffic to come in and out of these houses. My second question is, is if this was all brought up, the whole idea is that the Heinz does not have a three-bedroom, two-bathroom homes. That's why we need to do this. And so if we can get people that are going to have their children go to our schools. The lots are over $80,000 on my end, and it is way more expensive the closer you get to beach. So that means that somebody's gonna pay over $80,000 for a lot to build an 800-square-foot house, that we have a ton of here in the area at Heinz.
And that would be an 800 square foot on the first level, and then there would be a second level, and there'd be a basement. So looking at, at my house, I can tell you right now, it is basically 820 on that first floor, and then 833 on that second.
Well, at 30,000, uh, 30-foot wide, you take three feet on both sides, and if you don't have enough space to put in a double-wide trailer. So, you know, a real double-wide trailer is 26 feet wide, and you got 24 feet to build, 100 feet and three feet off. I don't know if any of them have an air conditioning on the side of your house, but if you've got central air and three feet, now, you're not gonna have a walk-in bathroom.
Yeah, our, our house is 20-foot wide.
Is your house brand-new, and your lot $80,000, and your house costs $350,000?
This is other new house that we have in plans, is 20-foot wide.
I mean, you know, these houses are going to be very expensive. I have pictures that the village board has, and you know, there's every bit of perfect fact from those houses that you can imagine, so, you're not talking a $300,000 home, that's not gonna get done on a lot, that's maybe $70,000. So we're talking some pretty exclusive homes, which, frankly, I think are a very beautiful thing, but somewhere along the line, that alley is gonna have its issues, because according to the pictures I see, the drive is coming from the back. Well, you can have one lane alley, and 3, 4, 500,000 dollar homes, nobody's gonna want.
Well, we, on the, the 1400 block of Samuel, a majority of the houses on the south side enter in through the alley. Right now, all of them do. Yeah, and it's, and it's tight.
Garage, like they are on the alley, if all the houses are on me, we don't have a lot. You're gonna have to take those garages or something to make that work. And I guarantee you, the village board isn't gonna let you take land off of Glen, because Glen is a high tax. You know, those houses are nice homes, they're gonna take more tax. So you gotta put up 125-foot lots, there between that alley and Samuel. Now, when you do, that, that shortens the lot, makes the house with a lot less value, if you own, basically on that day. And you're not gonna be able to expand that alley without taking that side yard, and I only have two feet, and you'd be foolish to take parking from the businesses that are on Prospect. Parking is free. Every one of those businesses on Prospect, they need every bit of their parking. So you gotta come over that way somewhere, and that alley has got to be expanded. Now, for Zara, well, for Zara, I don't know what it is now, but that's right there on Prospect and Glen, and the new Pearl construct, it's a home that they redid, not the labor mine, but the redistores. But, the thing is, you have two properties there, that nobody's gonna wanna give up the land.
Yeah.
Somewhere along the line, and that would be turning in on Glen. Now, they're gonna turn in on Glen, going into that Pearl house, and go down that alley to get to their garage. It's important to come up the other end and down, but they gotta get to the driveways. So if I spend that kind of money on my house, and I gotta back up on the driveway, because there's another car here, I need to back up. And I don't think anybody else would go across these alleys.
Yep, and I can't control the, the flow of the alleys, that's, that's not something I can control, but I mean-
But you can control how wide the alley is, and if you're building these size of houses, you're gonna have to take some of the land off that block, which is mainly where people can get that support. Now, that new car building over here, if you look at it, the way they've done that, they've, they've expanded that alley, and they've extended it on their land.
So even if we did, say we could expand the alley on the land we owned, we don't own all the houses. So, we wouldn't be able to expand the land on, for example, your house on there. And then we would have this alley that would kind of go like this, which wouldn't be uniform. One way that we could, again, suggest, but we don't, we don't have any say in that, and I know that there's a couple other residents that have even talked about the alleys that they have, that they use more as their front drive. If you look at the alley that is between Glen and Grandview, right, if you basically take your alley and go, go out onto Glen, and I'm gonna say, take a left, so you're going towards Grandview, there's an alley there that has houses on it, that I think also has like, a four-plex at the corner, or it's apartment building, but those residents have been asking for that to be a one-way for years, because of the street, and people are, you know, driving through that. Maybe we need to look at the flow, maybe you enter in a certain way and leave in a certain way. Because I know, I've sat there for 15 minutes sometimes, waiting for my neighbors to get in the car, so.
That's a problem that already exists.
Yeah, and we can't solve all problems. Yeah.
Build a new situation. Those driveways are coming off the alley, and there's a perfect situation. If it's one lane, it's a problem, you know, I mean, what are you gonna do? And if this house doesn't sell, and that house doesn't sell, but that house does sell, and I paid that kind of money for that house, and I gotta back up to let the market through, so I can get my house selling, it's, it's just not that feasible. I, I wouldn't do that. My second question to you is, is if I'm gonna build a $450,000 home, or $500,000 home, which is what these are gonna end up being by the time you have the lot. And right next to me is a $75,000 home, I wanna know when that house is gonna be torn down, and I have a beautiful home next to me. And one of the things about building a home that's expensive, and I'm not judging anybody, but part of it is snobbly. Now, when I live on a street and all the houses are $500,000, I tickle to death to write you a check with my address on it. Well, when I'm on the street, if some of the houses are $500,000, and this one is $5,000, right next to me, that house is carpeted or shat, there's not one window, and that, there's one window in there that isn't covered with carpet, drive-by, you can't get in. The house next to it, there's not one way to grass in that though. So, and finally, they tore, tore down that house, you all know, there was a house there that stood at least 10, 12 years. It was abandoned. It actually got to where it almost was a house tobe, it had so much stuff drawn out. When they tore that house down, the house right next to it, it doesn't have any windows. It literally has some windows, and black carpet on it, and then there's two windows, and in the front street, and that's what does work, we just recently moved out.
Yeah.
So, the thing is, is that you've got about three lots there, that you can immediately build on, but I see these other lots, I've had real estate agents come in and kind of actually tell them, that you do not come and consult with me about how you're doing, because people come in and ask me all the time. And one of the questions is, when they buy this lot, when they build this house, how long is the other house gonna stay there? That's the problem that the real estate agents that stop and tell them, that this alley is gonna have, have something done to it, for people to get in and out of the driveway. And, like I said, the alley's gotta be as pretty as my house. I mean, I figure that kind of money, I don't want a schmuck in the alley that everybody's putting their trash on the alley, and put that three-foot garage, and, and wait, I'm driving along, and there's my beautiful driveway, and somebody's there, and I can't get in and out of it.
Yep, so, part of the site plan, you'll have to make sure we addressed the alley. The, the flow of traffic, either make it, either has to become one-way, or?
So, it needs to be gorgeous. I mean, you know, it's a $500,000 home for an alley. That's all there is to it. You're gonna talk around putting streetlights and things along the, like, you know, so I got kids in the valley on it, I'm gonna want them to look at daddy's success. That's what it's all about. It's having beautiful homes, alongside Samuel, and creating a neighborhood that lasts right up against the golf course. As far as the Heinz goes, this is a wonderful plan. It's going to make a very beautiful street, very beautiful home. They cut up against the Miller and the country club, the other side is Glen. You're basically creating a neighborhood that can't go bad. Those people on Grandview Drive aren't gonna let their houses go bad. All they're on Glen is great, it's boxed in from the church all the way around, so, that section of town shouldn't, you know, things can happen. But it shouldn't go bad. So this is gonna be very, it's an upgrade to downtown, there's a bit of traffic. But if people are coming in and out of the alley, and people don't know when the dump next door is gonna be torn down, there's an issue.
And just to, to address that point, when we reached out to the landowners, everybody that would talk to us, a couple of them have not talked to us, and we didn't wanna hound them, we've sat down with them, even when they said they weren't gonna sell, or they were just considering, or they wanted to know what's going on, we let them know what's going on, with what our plan is. And so, we didn't want somebody to have a shoulda, coulda, woulda, you know, I wish I would've known this, I would've sold my house, or, you know, I wish I would've known this, I wouldn't have wanted to put up with the construction for, you know, two years, so that they would know that. And again, those are the ones that have, you know, enabled us to sit down with them and, and, and go talk with them. So, and we also are telling the people that are, are buying the houses, or the lots, or considering on buying them, that we don't own all of them. And, and we're telling them very open and honest which ones we don't own. So, they, just to let you know on that portion, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there other audience? Yes, sir.
Well, what you just said, Katie, I think this is a great deal, like, I think everybody is. You've had no communication with us at all. That, my Bob Swanson, 1332 East Samuel, and 1334 East Samuel, had the initial letter from you, and I made the appointment to see you, and that was it. That's, that's been, that's been the toll, have known nothing about what's going on at all, other than picking it up from neighbors, nothing from you. They complained on my, on my part. Communicate with me, how I know what's going on? And Jeff was another one. I think, yeah, yeah, nothing.
Yeah, and we can continue to communicate with you guys that are staying on the lot, or staying on the block and not selling. We've been heads down on trying to get everything to the point where we can know what's going on, when it's going on.
You've known a lot more than I have, I'll guarantee it to you.
From our initial conversation, when we showed you what we were gonna do, I mean, that's, that's what we're, we're doing.
Well, and, and my initial kind of conversation, that I started with you. Last I heard from you is that you would have an appraiser over for my properties, on the following funding. Never heard another word about anything. And you got a lot, you got a lot going on, but-
I'll have to check on my notes, because I know we did a comparable market analysis, which is the real estate's evaluation of that, so I'll double-check my notes on that. But we wouldn't pay for an appraisal, so, sorry, sir, we wouldn't pay for an appraisal to come until we had a contract. So I know I wouldn't say that we'd send an appraisal over, because that usually takes a couple weeks, and it needs to go through a bank.
Well, maybe that, maybe that was the plan, but, but what I was told, that, 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 uh, this is a relative for this, it's just a complaint.
So, we can do better at communicating with the existing landowners as well. We also have to get our project to the point where we are ready to openly share those, that information as well. And as you see, this is a, a big piece to see what we can. So, really, at that point, we need to get through this, and I'm assuming we're gonna even be delayed today, and so, what I'd like to do is make sure that we get any of the additional information requests you have, so we can make sure we get it to you guys for the next meeting.
And we can certainly do that. I mean, we've asked for additional information. We, we need you to provide it, we need, but we need real specifics, and so, we can go through that. But right now, there's no way for us to determine the height of the building unless we actually see what the plans are, the square footage of the building, because there are- see what the plans are, the square footage of the building, because there are variances on... And again, we're making assumptions on what we think you're building. And so, we need to have that exact information from you. So, as you would be doing, you'll have to do the site plan. So, you should have, I'm assuming you have blueprints and things of what you're building or drawings right now. So, that's what we need to see. Not conceptual drawings. We need to actually see square footage. And we can meet with you after this to let you know more in detail. But usually, the developer will look at the plan and look at the zoning and then request what the variances they would need. So, that's traditionally how it's been done and we can...
And it's, you know, I sent you the email that's on the application and that's, you know, if you look through that list, it talks about the pins, it talks about the exact size of the buildings, exactly what is there now, what's going to be there, those types of things.
Yep.
And then, and then you may want to do that, especially on the R3 properties, because they're going to need a site plan. So, you may want to do that in conjunction with the site plan, just to kill two birds with one stone.
Yep. Yeah, we kicked off our engineer on that. So, just a timing.
So, Mike, did you have a question? You started to raise your hand. I didn't know if you...
I have a question. Mike, do you think, I've been doing this for 55 years now. The infrastructure, I'm street superintendent now. So, the infrastructure that Katie's talking about, does this get reenforced and done before they start building, building a lot of properties?
No, because as part of the contingency that was in part of the redevelopment agreement is we have to create so much value before it can happen.
Okay, so the rate of pure sanitary density and the study, where all these at? I can say before...
I was just going to ask if we could have that.
There's nobody who's going to go changing stuff. Did you guys look at the infrastructure or know that that's going to... It's a pro forma infrastructure?
Well, and we are not changing the zoning, so it's zoned for R3. So, I mean, it could handle the density that we're doing.
Well, the three-foot there, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
The infrastructure, then I handle it if I start building tomorrow. Sorry, any comments?
Katie, just to, I mean, you keep referring back to the fact that it will handle it because it's original plat. The original plats are set, but that doesn't mean all those homes were built there ever at one time.
Correct.
So, going back, and those were built for very small, you know, sometimes less than, you know...
Yep. So, we have, we had meetings...
Let me just finish for a second.
Yeah.
So, those, so what I, I just, when we keep making reference, we need to keep in mind that the 30-foot lot and the depth, those were based on, you know, pre-1920s when it was set up and for much smaller homes. They probably didn't have three bathrooms. They probably had one bathroom. You know, they didn't have dishwashers and everything. So, I, you know, I think what Mike is saying, there's a lot more built into this that we need to take into consideration. And part of the development agreement is that you've stated that you will use, you know, your best efforts to be as compatible as you can with our ordinances. And so, we need, we need to work together on this because right now, it will be a challenge to meet all of these. And some of them, when you say 75% of the lot, if you have 75% of the lot, you virtually have no space for, you know, and you have storm sewers, but you still need space for water to be absorbed into the ground and not go into storm sewer. We don't want to end up like Puri's situation. So, there's some of those that, that may not be, we may not be able to grant a variance because of the significance. That's, you know, that's the first time I've heard 75% because we haven't heard any numbers. But most of them around 40 or 50 is lot coverage. You could get a little bit higher than that, but even looking at some dense codes like normal and things, you're still looking at for something like this, like a 45% or something and they're on a little bit larger of a lot. So, just to keep in mind. So, that's why we need the information is so that we can, because our hands are tied right now.
Yeah, and I think so as part of the site plan, we'd want to see the GPSD study or whatever information that they can get us. Any other comments from the audience? Anybody else have anything? Okay. Any other questions for Katie from the board?
I'm sorry, I have Katie. So, if, maybe this is part of the development agreement that I just need to re-educate myself on, but how do we, like, if we tell everybody, like, yes, the infrastructure can handle it, we know it's going to handle it until we hit this maximum amount of residents, right? And then, in the TIP agreement, you have, then the money would go then to pay for the $1.5 million of infrastructure. Who, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Who makes sure that that happens? Like, how do we look at them and say, when you put in 10 homes, like, you're going to get new infrastructure? Like, who, how do we make sure that that's really going to happen? Maybe I'm saying it wrong. Like, who's going to make sure, like, once X amount of homes go in, that the infrastructure's replaced?
And the village board would probably be better to, in reading the agreement that I read, and Katie, correct me, actually, you probably know this better than I do, but, or maybe Mark, but, once you, there's going to be a joint effort between the village and the developer to address that once the first building is complete, is that?
There's a certain EAV amount that has to be created in order to kick that off. And then, there's certain mini-triggers that go along with that process and kicking it off. So, and again, it's when we submit the building permit, that triggers something. When the building gets evaluated, that triggers something else. We want the infrastructure get done as soon as possible. Because again, then that, you know, as stated, beautifies the street. I mean, it, you know, in essence enhances it, enhances the infrastructure, all those items. I mean, we want it done because that will also help us, you know, sell, sell the lot, sell the homes.
And I think, Mark, you might check me if I'm wrong, but I thought that the whole, or somebody, that the fact that you had a condo building and X number of single-family homes would be that kind of tipping point to where it would be enough to do the infrastructure, right? So, I'm not even sure what those numbers were, but I remember it was the condo and like five homes or something, then...
I just was curious.
But your point on the other side is correct, is we need to look at the, at the infrastructure as is, and Mike's point, and say, yeah, it can handle six more homes or eight more homes and don't worry about it, so. Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Katie? Thank you, Katie. You can sit. So, yeah, I was going to ask you, Mike. So, can, do we have to vote on the variances or can we vote to table until we have more information?
Yeah, you can take any steps like that.
As you read this, I mean, it doesn't, these don't really make sense because we don't even have the information, so. So, I think what we, what I'd like to see is a motion to table the variances until we have the information necessary to understand, you know, what, all the required information from the application and et cetera, and so that we can get to the point of understanding the, what's going to be built on those lots. So, I would like to entertain a motion of that if somebody would like to make one.
I'd love to give you that motion. And I put one caveat in there that the people that are concerned need to be notified when that meeting's going to happen for sure, so they can look at the site plan.
I think from our village code, we would have to republish just as we do for the first one. So, we'll have to re, whenever it is, we'll have to be in the Journal Star and the letters will have to be resent.
I don't know that we have to, but we certainly can.
Okay. So, that...
Well, I think a good face, it's necessary.
So, that's your condition?
Yes.
Mark, just to clarify, if, because most likely there would be other variances that would need to be requested. So, those would have to be posted...
Absolutely would have to be republished. Correct.
And if we include other property owners.
Yeah, yep.
Anybody want to second that motion?
I will.
Mike Wu seconded. Any other discussions by the board? Okay, so I have a motion to table the request for variances made by Craig Masters, seconded by Mike Wu. Subject conditions of new posting and mailings as per the code. So, do you want to call the roll?
Rick Pitzel.
Aye.
Kathy Stevenson.
Aye.
Sarah DeBoer.
Aye.
Tessie Buckler.
Aye.
Steve Katie.
Aye.
Mike Wu.
Aye.
Craig Masters.
Aye.
All X.
Nice, no praise. Okay, very good. Thank you. And thank you, Katie, for being here tonight and all you folks for being here tonight. My computer won't come up. Yeah, so the only thing left on our agenda for tonight are a couple of housekeeping issues and other. So, the first thing was, I know we, I've asked Sarah to start tracking and making sure who is going to be in attendance at meetings. So, I've made up a little thing like this. So, she'll be trying to get with each, everybody, just as she does today, but we'll have a better tracking of who's going to be here so we don't end up like we did last month where we were short a person and then we didn't have a quorum. And then, so make sure you get back to Sarah in a timely manner, the week, at least the week before the meeting, so we know who's going to be in attendance or if we have to...
Actually, if we're sending out the notices, shouldn't we do it before the notices are sent out? Because otherwise...
Yeah, I mean, but for the most part, I think most people are available. We just want to know if one or two people are going to be short. If we have more than that, then we certainly need to know that. Yep. So, like for next month, we have, the 19th is the meeting? Does anybody have anything on the 19th? Does anybody not know for sure they're not going to be here on the 19th?
I mean, I'm flying back that day, so I get in at 4:00. Got the earliest flight back, but I may or may not get here, so.
But anybody else, does anybody else know that for sure they can't be here on the 19th? Okay. And then, just for checking, December is, it's the 3rd, right?
17th.
17th. The 17th of December, and nobody's planning to be out of town on the 17th. I'm assuming that between next month and the next month, we're going to have some more of this stuff swirling, so. Okay. Okay, and then tomorrow night is the village board meeting. So, the recommendation we made for the overlay district will go to the village board tomorrow night. That's on their agenda, correct?
Yes.
And so, just wanted to make sure that you all knew that on the board. So, if you want to be there, in case the board has questions or whatever, I don't know. But just FYI, the board meeting tomorrow night will entertain the final approval of our motion to change the code for overlay districts in the downtown overlay district.
Yeah, I think it would be important for as many of us that can be there to be there to show that we're supporting it. I mean, obviously, they know our vote, but I think it's also important that we are there if we can be.
Yep, and that's at 6:00.
Do we know where we're at on that agenda, any chance?
Um, yes, I do.
Or is it a...
I don't have it.
I have it.
He's got it.
I asked Sarah for that tonight, today, because...
Or if there's a lot on the agenda, I just didn't know.
It's not a big agenda, so it should go quick.
So, we have called order pledge, roll call, correspondence, announcements, trustee reports, and then under new business, the first thing under new business, so. So, yeah, I'm trying to think what they were.
Do you have anything else, or are you...
Sorry?
Are you...
Go ahead. You know yours because I have to look mine up.
Just to let the board know, we did the same presentation to the economic development committee and the business development district, as well as I made it to the superintendent, and they were all very well-received. The EDC actually said that they would like to see some involvement or some kind of interaction between the boards. So, I think that's something we should talk about in more detail in terms of some of the planning that they're doing. One of the suggestions from one of the EDC members who, at the BDD last month, is now the chairman, Kevin Shields, was that they have money to spend in terms of the business development district and for facade improvements and some help on our part that if, you know, we have this vision is where we want to go, to take a look at helping them with some criteria for that. So, I think that that's something, I know Beth isn't here, but that's something that she's done at Junction City and I think might be a good fit. So, that's just something that they threw out and I think is good feedback in terms of how we're perceived. Tessie, I know you've talked about the planning issue and how to get us more. We've done a lot of zoning, but trying to move forward in planning, which is involved with zoning as well. But this streetscape plan, you know, for, as part of this, is how do we improve our streetscape? And then, I think just if, if this new development is going to have a streetscape, making sure that we start to move forward and have some dialogue on that. And then, just if we are going to see more development pressures as this nature, really try to dig in, I think, on the overlay of a residential area. And then, lastly, we've just had, we're going to combine, this is kind of, kind of housekeeping, but we're going to be combining the planning. So, right now, there's a separate, because of the way the planning used to be separate, there's a separate application for planning, site plan and special use and then variances. So, we're going to combine those two. I've actually got a rough draft that I'm going to send out. And if people can just take a look at it, make sure it makes sense, try to get it back as soon as possible so we can get it up on the website. I just did that and I'll probably email it or Craig, maybe I can have Sarah print off one for you to pick up. So, we can get it back and then get it back up the website. So, people just have to fill out one form and everything's in one place instead of two places and they miss it. So, I think that will help us. And the only other thing I thought, based on going through some of this stuff, is that we do have a height conflict with R3 buildings being 54 feet and then the other buildings on Prospect that are subject to the overlay district, that when they're one step off, that we probably need to address that compatibility, so.
Another reason for a residential overlay.
Right, okay.
Especially on the east side of Prospect.
Okay. Okay. My, I had a couple things. One is, we had a recent fence question. And so, I was, of course, looking at the old code. But if anybody remembers, in 2016, we passed a new fence code. But anyhow, I guess, as I looked at this, I'm not sure, anyhow, I guess the question is, should, we talked to always, we always talked about the 40% open design in the fence. We talked, so you have to have a fence permit to build a front yard fence and a variance to have a front yard fence, 40% open design. But then, I was always thinking that we were, the intent was to make the backyard fences, even if they were privacy fences, six-foot high, that they would be 40% open design. And so, did anybody else have that idea, knowledge? At one point, I looked way back and in 2008, that's what it was. And then, in 2016, we changed that to just be front yard fences, 40% open. So, if everybody's good with that, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page as me. Because I was, obviously, my mind was going somewhere else and I was telling some guy he had to have 40% open design in his backyard fence and he thought I was crazy and came up here and I think Dustin told him I was crazy, so.
I thought it was, initially, it was a public safety issue that I thought the police, fire department, they wanted to be able to be able to see through and not have a stockade fence down the back.
Right. I mean, initially, that's why that 2008 one got made that way was because, I think Dustin was even here at the meeting when we talked about it, was that, you know, you get everybody with a six-foot privacy fence solid in the back alley and you run down, you know, a police... down an, you know, a police officer runs down an alley, he can't see anything, it's like running down a, you know, a prison wall. And so, just wanted to make sure, if we, if you have any thoughts on that, we can talk after the meeting, or, you know, whatever, but.
We discussed that once, and, and, yeah, geez, buddy, you brought that up, and you lose the aspect that you're putting a privacy fence in for if you do that. So, a 40% open fence in the front yard, that, that's fine, side yard, on a corner lot, you have to do it for traffic, or whatever, but a, but a privacy fence is by its name, privacy. If you wanna ensure that your kids are in the swimming pool, and not being golfed at by somebody else, so, no.
So, so the, the privacy fence actually starts at the back of the house, I think, so if it's in a side yard, no matter what side yard, I think it has to be open also. And then, starting in the back, then it can be closed, 'cause I think we actually gave one person, we told one person they had to have open, you know, coming out from the house and starting back, and then they could close it off going around, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what you're saying is it's solid.
In the backyard.
Oh, okay, but the front is, is still 40%?
The front is still 40% open, I think side yard is still 40%.
Okay, and then the, the variance on the front is only, I thought we were faltering that, if it was like on commercial or something, for the most part, that you wouldn't have a, above a four-foot fence.
You cannot put any fence without a variance, in the front yard.
Right, right.
Right.
But the six-foot was intended for more commercial, okay.
Okay. Okay, so I guess it was just me that was a little wacky. The other thing was.
Meeting attendance?
Oh, yeah, the discussion on remote attendance for meetings. So, we had a discussion back when about remote attendance, and we have a section in our code, I can do a find here real quick. Electronic participation, so basically, it says that any member may attend electronically. I'm trying to cut to the chase here.
Work travel.
But only under the following conditions. First, the member must notify the village clerk or chairman of the board as soon as practical, I don't know why the village clerk, but anyhow, as soon as practical, before the meeting of the member's request to electronically attend the meeting, so that necessary communication equipment can be made available. So first, you have to plan it. But then, second, the member must assert one of the more following reasons for not being able to physically attend. They can't attend because of the member's illness or disability, cannot attend because of conflicting obligations to his or her employer, that can't attend because she is otherwise engaged in business on behalf of the village, or they cannot attend because of a family or other emergency. And then, there's a whole section on making a motion at the board to making sure nobody objects to it the night of the meeting. But I think, so that was pretty tight, and, and we talked to Mark, and Mark said he doesn't know why it needs to necessarily be that type.
We can certainly loosen that up.
It's not a state requirement, 'cause it's my understanding, yeah, I thought it was a state requirement, and just someone I know that's on the Peoria city council said that it was the same, I don't know.
I'm, I'm not aware that the state statute does not give you discretion to loosen that up. I'll look at it, but I, I believe that it's the board's prerogative to change those criteria. You need to have criteria, that much is mandated by the state. But I don't, I, I think you can adjust those. So I'll verify that, and if that's the case, I can.
So the question is, do we want to loosen that any, and to allow, so like, tonight, Elizabeth had to be somewhere with her family, it's not an emergency, but she had to be out of town with her family. I'm not too sure what exactly it was, but it wasn't an emergency. I think it was, her daughter was in a play, or.
Her son's actually gonna be in a movie, and he's on set.
Her son's in a movie, okay, there you go. Well, that's pretty important to her, probably. So anyhow, she said, well, I couldn't attend remotely, but, of course, the code wouldn't let her attend remotely today, and she wanted to. So I guess the question is, do we wanna loosen those any, or should we have Mark try to put some language together that loosens that a little bit, from family emergency to, you know, family obligations, or something to that effect?
I would be in favor of that. I mean, as long as there's, I mean, I like the part where you have to be notified ahead of time.
Right.
And then also, maybe a vote before, just to make sure the other board members aren't, you know, against it, but.
Exactly.
Other than that, I would be okay with that.
I will take a look and let you know.
I mean, 'cause things come up, and it's, if we don't have a quorum, then it's, everybody's time is wasted.
Exactly.
So it would solve some of those issues.
And Mark, I have the email that was sent to me from, is it, was it Tibbs?
Yeah, Mike Tibbs.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll send that to you, so you at least have some of the legwork on that.
Okay. Anything else? Any other other than anybody has? Thank you for your attendance tonight, and do you want the, the table motion?
Yeah, sure.
You want that? Okay. So anything else? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. And thank you, all you audience people that came tonight.